I'd like to call the June 1st, 2021 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Got a couple of announcements. First, I'd like to announce that anyone who's visiting or participating in this meeting, who use county parking facilities or transit can be reimbursed for your transit pass or parking validation. You can see one of the sheriff's officers who was here today and they can validate that for you today. I'll read the ethics reminder to the board. "In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board at this meeting." All right, we come to the consent agenda. And Commissioners, first let me ask, are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve? Well, actually, let me make one other comment. So at our briefing meeting prior to the regularly scheduled meeting, the Commissioners discussed whether or not we would plan to vote on our budget this evening, once the public hearings have been conducted. And by consensus of the Board, there was agreement that we will hold our public hearings tonight, give the public a chance to comment on the budget. We're not planning to vote on the budget tonight. We're planning on adopting the budget at our meeting in two weeks from today. So that's where we'll actually vote on it, even though it would be permissible to vote once the public hearing has been held tonight, but we're not going to. We're going to take a little bit of additional time. "Is there a motion to approve the agenda as published with the exception of removing the discussion about the hotel occupancy policy off of the agenda for tonight?"
So move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, we now come to general public comment. We will, of course, also have public comment later in the meeting on the budget public hearing, but this is for general public comment. The time for, we've got two folks who were signed up to speak to the Board during public comment, Don Yelton and James Fulton, and Mr. Yelton is signed up first. The time limit for individual comment to the Board is for three minutes. And once your time is up, if you have any questions, you can leave your name and address and phone number with the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment during the public comment period. This is a chance for the public to speak to the Board. Mr. Fulton?
Hi, James Fulton. I'm in Arden, North Carolina. So I came down today, I'm trying to figure out how to properly engage with you guys. I offered, pardon me, I'm a little nervous.
It's okay, take your time.
Offered a correction to the minutes from your May 4 meeting, and I don't know if that was done or not. I sent a note to the Chairman, my district Commissioners, and Lamar. And I've got a copy of that if you've lost it. On May the 4th, I went to the Board of Education meeting. I took off work early, and we were asked to leave, so I didn't get a chance to talk to elected officials. Last week, I tried to engage by email with several members here. All I wanted to know is the position of the committee or the Commissioners on critical race theory. And, you know, we went back and forth about four emails and still didn't get an answer. My assumption is that the Commissioners support critical race theory, but I'd like to know, so I'm not sure how to do that. I've come here, I've sent emails, I mean, how am I supposed to get that information?
Are you finished with your speaking?
Yes, because you're not going to answer me, right?
Just asking if you're finished or not.
Who can I talk to to find out how I'm going to get that information?
As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we're not going to get into like an interactive mode here, so we're just, we're here to listen to you. I'll just comment, I did respond to your emails and shared my perspective, so.
Yeah, but.
Happy, you're welcome to come here and speak to the Board, or email the Board members, and they can individually respond as they see best.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Yelton?
Dale, stand by. I can't, I gotta keep my record perfect, folks, one way or the other. And I'm glad to see a citizen come up here, being a little bit nervous and say he can't talk to you, because that's the truth. That's the bottom truth, we don't communicate. But I always try to give you something to think on, if you've got some brain cells to work with. And I was lying in bed the other night, and it dawned on me, we all want to tax the rich, right? That's everybody's plan. And we all want to, cities trying to bring property in and tax it for more money. Folks, where would America be without the rich? Let's look at the Vanderbells. Old Man Vanderbilt was a street fighter in New York. He bought a ferry. From that ferry, then he stuffle people back and forth across the ferry, then he bought boats and ships, and then he gave a ship to the President during the Civil War so they could start a navy in the North. And then he comes to Asheville and builds the Biltmore House. Where would we be without the Biltmore House, folks? I want you to look at it. Think about it. Think about Carnegie, how many libraries he built, and how many public places he put up. Think about the Rockefellers, and right here in North Carolina. Start thinking about the Dukes, built a hospital, built a university. That's rich people, folks. Quit kicking the rich people in the butt, because they're responsible for where we are at. And it dawned on me that that is the truth. And if we don't see it, we're stupid. And I'm putting myself in that category, because one of the things happens with age, you learn a lot, don't you? With age, you learn a lot. And I see a lot at 73 that I didn't see at 25 and 26. And I want you to think about that. What's wrong with accumulating wealth? And I'll bet you a dollar against a doughnut that the 15% of the population that tuck down the Vance Monument will take every dime from the wealthy to do whatever they want to do. And they call it progressive, but it's to shut us up, form committees that make decisions, just like the Vance Monument. You Commissioners need to step up and do your job and start making decisions yourself. You might not get elected, but by God, at the election time, you might be so proud of what you have done, because you might have another person here. And I could name some well-to-do people in Asheville that are afraid to speak up right now.
All right, thank you. That concludes all of the folks who signed up for public comment. So we're moving on to presentations, and the first one is a proclamation recognizing Elder Abuse Awareness Month. And Commissioner Amanda Edwards is going to read and present this, and Jennifer Teague and Lori Dotson from Health and Human Services, I believe, are here to join us for this item.
Thanks so much for joining us this evening. Before we began, they were sharing with me that over this past year, there have been over 1,800 reports of elder abuse in our community, and have responded to 2/3 of them. And it's the most across North Carolina in terms of reports made and responses in regards to those reports. It left me a little shaken to think about what is happening to the elders in our community, which makes me really grateful for the work that you all do through Adult Protective Services. So it really is an honor to present you all with this proclamation this evening. This is the County of Buncombe Proclamation, Elder Abuse Awareness Month. Whereas, in 2006, the International Network for the Prevention of Elder Abuse, in support of the United Nations International Plan of Action, proclaimed today to recognize the significance of elder abuse as a public health and human rights issue. And whereas Buncombe County's vulnerable and elder adults deserve to live safely with dignity. And whereas, in 2021 marks the 16th Annual World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, its recognition will promote a better understanding of abuse and neglect of older adults. And whereas, vulnerable and elder adults of all socioeconomic, racial, and ethnic backgrounds may be targets of abuse, neglect, or exploitation which occurs in families, long-term care facilities, and communities. And whereas, Buncombe County Adult Protective Services received 1,794 reports in 2020, with 1,183 screened in for evaluation. And whereas, we know that elder abuse and mistreatment are underreported according to a study by the World Health Organization that found only 1 in 24 cases of elder abuse is reported. And whereas, recognizing that it is up to all of us to ensure that proper social structures exist so people can retain community and societal connections, reducing the likelihood of abuse. And whereas, protecting Buncombe County's vulnerable and elder adults is a community responsibility, and it is imperative that communities work together to help reduce and prevent abuse, neglect, and exploitation. And whereas, all residents should watch for signs of abuse, such as physical trauma, withdrawal, depression, anxiety, fear of family members, friends, or caregivers, and report suspected abuse or exploitation to the Buncombe County Health and Human Services Office. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe as follows: That the month of June 2021 be proclaimed Elder Abuse Awareness Month in Buncombe County. That this Board does hereby encourage all citizens to participate in community efforts to support and improve the safety and well-being of vulnerable and elder adults, and secure their right to live free of abuse, neglect, and exploitation. That this proclamation be effective upon its adoption, June 1, 2021, by Brownie Newman, Chairman, Buncombe County Board of Commissioners. Thank you. And I think they're going to say a few words this evening as well.
Thank you so much. We just wanted to take a moment to say thank you so much to the Commissioners for your support. The work that we do, we really do believe is valuable and serves a great need in our community. Lori Dotson's been with the county for many, many years, and continues to speak to the support that we receive from our Commissioners, and we really appreciate that. And thank you for drawing attention to this important issue today.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all the important work that you and your team do. We really appreciate it. All right, next up, we have a proclamation recognizing Pride Month, and Commissioner Jasmine Beach-Ferrara is going to read and present this item. And Mary Michelson from the county's HR department is here to be with us as well. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I would like to thank the Commissioners for recognizing June as Pride Month in Buncombe County. I'm accepting this on behalf of the LGBTQIA+ HR Advisory Group comprised of Buncombe County employees and allies with a broader message for all. It is important that the LGBTQIA+ members of our community know that they are valued and respected. We are glad that they are here. While Pride Month can be full of symbolic gestures, our hope for this proclamation is to be a true testament and commitment to the work Buncombe County is doing to improve well-being for all of our residents. This is particularly true for those who have been systematically marginalized simply for being who they are or for who they love. We believe the way forward is to continue to show up for each other, as referenced in the proclamation, bravely, boldly, flawed, and full of hope. Thank you again to the Mr. Chairman and the Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you to Mary and all the members of that team for the important work you're doing. This is actually a historic moment, the first time Buncombe County has issued a proclamation in recognition of Pride Month, and I'm very honored to be part of this moment. I'll read the proclamation aloud. "County of Buncombe Proclamation in Honor of Pride Month. Whereas the battle for dignity, equality, and personal safety for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning intersection asexual people is reflected in the tireless commitment of the LGBTQIA+ community, as well as dedicated advocates and allies who strive to forge a more inclusive society. Whereas each year, the month of June honors the 1969 Stonewall Riots at the Stonewall Inn in New York City, frequently referred to as the start of the modern LGBTQIA+ rights movement in the United States, now celebrated with Pride Month events nationwide. Whereas it is important to take time during this month to reflect on the LGBTQIA+ rights movement and the important progress that has been made. Whereas more than 35,000 of our neighbors in western North Carolina identify as LGBTQ+ LGBTQIA+, and whereas a recent survey at UNC Asheville revealed that 1/3 of the students don't identify with conventional binary heterosexual stereotypes. And whereas LGBTQIA+ individuals across the United States, including those who live in our local community, continue to face hate and discrimination simply for being who they are and for who they love, and there remains much work to do to extend the promise of our country to every person. And whereas Buncombe County's non-discrimination ordinance recognizes that it is in the best interest of the residents of Buncombe County to enact protections against discrimination that reflect the community's shared values of equality, inclusion, and fair access, and to preserve the health, safety, and welfare of people without regard to certain actual or perceived status or characteristics. Whereas Buncombe County has recognized the importance of equity for all as a core value in their strategic plan. Whereas as an employer, Buncombe County has the opportunity to provide a safe and inclusive workplace for all employees and be a proud supporter and leader towards LGBTQIA+ equity in Buncombe County. While there is much work to be done, we are committing to a better future by showing up, as Rachel Macy Stafford once wrote, bravely, boldly, flawed, and full of hope. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe as follows: That the month of June 2021 be proclaimed Pride Month in Buncombe County, and that this proclamation be effective upon its adoption of June 1, 2021, signed by Brownie Newman, Chairman, Buncombe County Board of Commissioners."
All right, thank you so much, Commissioner. And thank you, Mary. Thank you for being with us. We really appreciate it, bringing this forward. All right, the next presentation is going to be brought forward by Rachel Nygaard from our Strategic Partnerships Office, and it's regarding the Early Childhood Committee.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Rachel Nygaard from Strategic Partnerships, here to introduce the members of an ad hoc working group within the broader Early Childhood Committee. This is a presentation that's serving two purposes. First, there's an annual presentation when funding committees come before the Board of Commissioners and share an update about their work. So the Early Childhood Committee is on their scheduled evening to do that. And secondly, back in January, the Board of Commissioners invited the Early Childhood Committee to dig into expanding pre-K, and to come back to share about that work and talk about what an expansion of pre-K might look like in Buncombe County. So we have a team that will share the microphone. I'll get out of the way. Leslie Anderson will be the first presenter, followed by Wendy Weber, then Misty Cogbell, and Brandy Bowman. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
I am Leslie Anderson, a member of the Early Childhood Education Committee for this county. We appreciate the opportunity to present to you this evening. Tonight, we will share updates about our work to date and tell you about our plans for enhancing the impact of early childhood education in our county. I'll begin with a little bit of background about the Early Childhood Fund. As you probably remember, this fund and committee were established by the Board in October of 2018. The scope was to increase access to high-quality early care and education, with an emphasis on pre-K. The budget began the following July with a $3.6 million appropriation in the first year, with a 2% increase in each future year. As you can see on the slide, for our upcoming fiscal year, the recommended budget amount is $3.745. The Early Childhood Committee was established to oversee recommendations for use of the Early Childhood Fund. The committee includes three members of the Board of Commissioners, Commissioners Beach-Viera, Pressley, and Whitesides. We appreciate the opportunity to serve alongside such committed supporters. There are 12 other members with diverse perspectives, as you can see, listed there on the screen, such as business community, medical field, parents, advocates, educators, and more. I'd like to take a moment here to acknowledge how much we appreciate the vision, the fortitude, the commitment of these three Commissioners in particular, who have worked so hard with us, as well as the support of all seven of you on behalf of young children. Here's a photo of some of the group members, along with a staff member, back in the pre-pandemic days, when we could get all close together like that, and before more recent members were appointed. The Early Childhood Fund has had two grant cycles so far, FY 2020, last fiscal year, as you well know, and 2021, the current year ending. Once selected, grantees work with staff to establish contracts with the scope of work, deliverables, and performance measures for their projects. Those performance reports are published on the Early Childhood Grant website. Some highlights to date that we're particularly proud of include adding more than 200 spots for children to attend early care and education programs, as well as focusing on increasing workforce development opportunities, providing classroom behavior supports, and in two instances, funding increases in teacher pay. In total, we funded grants to 16 unduplicated organizations. Now that we have a couple of grant cycles completed, our committee began looking at what it would take to scale up our impact and focus on true community-level results related to pre-K. And one point, an important point of clarification I'd like to make before we continue, when we say pre-K or pre-kindergarten, we consider that to be four-year-olds who are rising into kindergarten. In January, the Board of Commissioners tasked our committee with developing a recommendation for what this scale-up could look like. Since that time, we formed an ad hoc working group, which includes, as Rachel said, Brandy Bowman, Misty Cogbell, Wendy Weber, and myself. We worked closely with several staff to establish definitions, review data, study models, gather input, and create a recommended direction to move forward, which you'll hear about later. The purpose statement that we came up with is this, as you can see: All Asheville City and Buncombe County students enter kindergarten ready and fully prepared for success in school. When we say all students, we mean there should be no gaps by race, by income, by ethnicity, or other attributes. This inclusive statement is an important point, because there are achievement gaps in the 12K system that we know start at a very young age. One of the things that makes this a strong purpose is that it's connected to the county's strategic plan goal to increase kindergarten readiness. Also, it's aligned with the United for Youth Network goal that by 2035, all Asheville City and Buncombe County students graduate from high school ready and fully prepared to pursue their goals and dreams. Before we thought about the future, the subcommittee looked at where we stand currently. Are children ready for kindergarten in Buncombe County? According to the most recently available data, which is from 2019, 31% of our children, 1/3, are below the standard expectation for kindergarten readiness. Based on current data, that means that approximately 785 students enter kindergarten not ready, already experiencing an achievement gap. This is based on a composite pre-kindergarten readiness assessment conducted by the Asheville City Schools and the Buncombe County Schools. The systems use different tools, so staff consolidated the results that you see here. As we know, COVID, oh, excuse me, there are a lot of questions about the potential impact that COVID may have on this data for 2020 and going forward. As we know, COVID had a tremendous impact on all childcare, as well as K-12 education. During the pandemic, enrollment in early care and education was significantly down, and school was delivered in non-traditional ways, as we know. Of late, however, we've heard from providers that more parents are returning to work, so enrollment is increasing, and that's good news. Thank you so much, and now I'll toss to Wendy.
So as we started our task, we noticed that we really needed to find some better data. The use of same kindergarten readiness instruments by both public school systems would really facilitate the ability to evaluate program successes. Pre-K data linked with K-12 data would enable analysis of long-term benefits of the pre-K program. If data could be disaggregated, it could provide more revealing information in order to tailor programmatic and community needs. Measurements of whole child readiness in several domains would better inform program focus. There are also a lot of questions related to the data. Would Asheville City Schools and Buncombe County Schools use the same instruments for evaluating kindergarten readiness, making it easier for evaluation? Can we link pre-K data to the K-12 system to find out how children who have been served by pre- by pre-K are doing with school readiness and performance? What would the data show if we could see kindergarten readiness scores by race, ethnicity, income, or other attributes? Can we access information beyond literacy and math, such as social-emotional information, for a better whole-child picture of success? We know that rich data provides insight into short and long-term benefits. Success is more than what shows up in a test score. Kindergarten readiness helps children with long-term success beyond academics, reduced incarcerations, reduced schools and suspensions, and grade retentions, and increased likelihood of entering college on time, better health outcomes for life, and employment readiness. The current Buncombe landscape shows that 17% of children in Buncombe County are living below the federal poverty level, and 42% are living below 200% of the federal poverty level. The 45% of children not served in licensed early care and education is a concern. Currently, 46% of four-year-olds are served by a licensed early care or education program in Buncombe County. A full report about the state of childcare in Buncombe County is produced regularly by Buncombe Partnership for Children and published on their website. It provides information about child demographics, types of programs, enrollment, quality, availability, workforce, and more. The partnership really does impressive work, and staff have been most helpful and generous with their time and data as our committee delved into this project. We know that pre-K works. This slide includes links for you to some of the literature regarding the benefits of pre-K. Consistently, since the first big longitudinal studies of the benefits of pre-K, the Perry Preschool Project, the AB Sudarian Project, and more recent longitudinal studies like the Abbott Preschool in New Jersey and the Boston Pre-K, have shown that every dollar invested in preschool has a return of investment of 7% to 10% per year. At the end of third grade, children from low-income families who have attended a high-quality NC pre-K program had higher reading and math scores on end-of-grade tests than similar children who had not attended. Kids who participate in pre-K go on to be less likely to get arrested, go on welfare, or be unemployed as adults. Overall, pre-K leads to significantly better outcomes in life. So we looked at what the barriers were to families in the local system. There were, there was lack of information for families. It was really complex to apply. The cost for before and after care is high, and site locations were not convenient for a lot of families. There's lack of transportation. Hours and schedules don't support family needs. There are often language barriers, and there's a need for specialized trauma and behavioral health personnel. That was a tongue twister. Providers also have a lot of barriers and challenges. Startup costs are not supported. There's a lack of a good startup timeframe. There's expense to meet program requirements. Reimbursement rates are actually less than the cost to deliver services. Low teacher pay and incentives make it hard to hire teachers, and there's a very high turnover. There's a lack of qualified teachers. When our working group began the study of data about pre-K, what we expected to find was a shortage of care, a capacity issue, a lack of spots, sometimes called slots, which I really hate. But there's a higher percentage of four-year-olds in, served in care than any other agent in early care and education, and we're not seeing, at this time, wait lists, although that may change now that COVID is waning. There are currently openings available, meaning that if parents are seeking pre-K for their child, they should be able to find it. So we really wanted to see what gets in the way for families to be able to take advantage of the programs that are available. We found the affordability of extended care is a barrier. The cost of wraparound care, which is before and after-school and summer care, is high, and wraparound care availability is limited and tied to specific locations only. Locations and program hours may not meet family needs, or they may experience other issues, such as transportation, language, their child's special developmental needs, creating even further limitations. We also looked into challenges on the provider side. That is what gets in the way for programs trying to operate an NC pre-K or other high-quality pre-K program. We found that the NC pre-K program is a system that's difficult for providers to participate in. There's no funding to support startup costs, or a good timeframe for them to work into meeting the initial requirements, which are rather stringent. Reimbursement rates aren't adequate to cover operating expenses and actually only represent about 60% of what it costs to run a program, plus reimbursements are in arrears by a month. This is a real disincentive to start a business, no matter how much you love children. As a result, teacher pay is very low, which results in a lack of qualified teachers. In North Carolina, early educators with a bachelor's degree are paid 28.8% less on average than their colleagues in the K through eight public school system. The Center for the Study of Early Childcare Employment at the University of California, Berkeley publishes a yearly report on employment statistics and policies that require attention. Their 2020 Early Childhood Workforce Index reports that nationally, the poverty rate for early educators is eight times greater than that of their similarly educated K through eight counterparts. And according to the North Carolina Association for the Education of Young Children, our region is considered to be a workforce desert in relation to early childhood educators. I'm going to now pass along to Misty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. We have seen in our committee work the necessity and the benefits of connecting with other partners. So as part of our research, along with Buncombe Partnership for Children, we turned to other counties in our state, other counties that have locally funded pre-K models. We met with our counterparts and reviewed their models to learn about how their communities are addressing barriers to the system. Each county is unique with its size and makeup, and each model is tailored with services and funding plans that serve their community's unique needs. Durham, Forsyth, and Mecklenburg County have each implemented a county-specific pre-K program with tailored criteria unique to their county. Wake County has adopted an approach that supplements the existing NC pre-K program in order to address limitations of the program and increase the reach and capacity to expand. One caveat regarding Wake County is that they are now launching a new phase of their program, which extends the NC pre-K program down from four-year-olds to serve a wider reach to eligible three-year-olds. Other factors that our working group considered during our research included potential for growth in the system. In North Carolina, there are efforts underway to grow the NC pre-K program. My Future NC, a statewide educational attainment gap initiative, has an NC pre-K expansion plan which would call for a doubling of the NC pre-K program within Buncombe County. In addition, at the federal level, legislators are working on a proposal that calls for universal pre-K, which would be rolled out in partnership with the state. In North Carolina, this would most certainly mean some kind of expansion of the NC pre-K program. Our team developed this list of key elements to guide us toward a recommendation. We knew that no matter what we brought forward as a future direction, we would want to make sure that it is diverse, inclusive, equitable, for children, communities, and the early childhood workforce, that it is a high-quality program model, that it is accessible for all families in Buncombe County, that it is reflective of family and community voice, that it is data-focused, that it is appropriately financed, which means fully funded, and finally, it is responsive to the changes in the early childhood system. Thank you so much. I'll turn it over to Brandy Bowman.
Good evening. So this brings us to our planned direction. Our committee is pursuing plans for Buncombe County to establish a local model that supplements and expands the existing NC pre-K program. This model would support existing providers with enhancement funding for more adequate compensation for delivering high-quality programming, and it would support NC pre-K readiness to equip new providers to join the program. We will also plan career development partnerships to address the workforce desert that was mentioned previously, which is critical for expanding early care and education. We will build local systems to address data gaps. We will plan with the key elements in mind: engaging community from the very beginning, using data to drive program design and decision-making, equitably prioritizing populations that are underserved, and focusing on quality. If we expand NC pre-K up to the My Future NC goal level, it would double the number of children served. Access would increase through attention to community needs. The workforce would be equitably strengthened through more supports for teachers. We would have richer data about what works and where there are gaps. We believe this plan will lead to more children entering kindergarten fully prepared for success in school, thus narrowing the achievement gap and providing lifelong benefits. And before I, we pass it back to staff to wrap up with next steps, we would like to take a moment and show our appreciation for our many partners in this work. Thank you to the Board of Commissioners for establishing kindergarten readiness as a priority and for supporting Early Childhood Education Fund. Thanks to staff for the coordination and hard work. We could not have gotten this far without you. And that is absolutely the truth, in case there is any doubt. Also, we would not have been successful without the partnership locally from the Asheville-Buncombe Preschool Planning Collaborative and the team at Buncombe Partnership for Children. We learned a lot from partners across the state and the helpful resources from groups like the State Early Childhood Education and the National Association for the Education of Young Children. Now I will pass it back to Rachel to wrap us up. Thank you.
So what is next? Just as we have in our work so far, as you heard from Brandy, staff will partner with the committee on the next step in the planning process. And that overall next step is to design the model and establish a multi-year implementation plan. This will include some of the things that you see on the screen and that you heard mentioned in the presentation, coming up with a structure and process for community participation, to have that involvement and family voice to inform the design of the program, to follow up with our educational partners, and establish data agreements with the school districts, the K-12 system, as well as the early learning data, the early learning providers, doing cost modeling, securing a funding plan for the model, and then ultimately working into a multi-year implementation. I will conclude by asking if there are any questions.
I've got one. I'm not sure who to pose it to, so I'll pose it to the room, but I heard the phrase "workforce desert" going around a couple of times. I guess I'm just wondering if that's, if that's a chicken or an egg issue, because there's not enough, I don't know if there's these schools for pre-K education, and therefore not enough slots for teachers, or it's an education training problem, or if it's multiple problems. I'd love to hear more about what's creating that desert.
It is indeed complex, as much of, as much is within the early childhood system. Quality has been on the rise, and in order to deliver a high-quality program, it does require a lot of education and training and credentialing for people who work in that system, and the reimbursement or the pay that providers get for delivering the program is low. I think you heard Leslie say with the NC pre-K program, the reimbursement that they get covers about 60% of their costs. So one of the areas that gets pinched is teacher pay. So that's one side of the issue. And then certainly, as you were describing, making sure that there are accessible avenues for people who want to go into the career and stay in the career is an important part of it also.
Thanks.
I'll just take a moment to say thank you so much to the members of the working group. This was a very big and heavy lift that you all took on, in addition to your other work on the committee, and it feels like it just really helps coalesce a set of recommendations and strategies about how we think in terms of moving forward. The Early Childhood Education Committee voted and unanimously endorsed this set of recommendations, so this has the full backing of that committee. And feels like, in so many ways, just sort of the natural evolution of the work. We've spent the last two years, we're now heading into our third funding cycle, really learning a lot about the local ecosystem and having the opportunity to say yes to folks coming forward with really compelling, important ideas, and I think that's helped bring a lot of clarity and insight into what it means to create a Buncombe model, which is really what we're talking about here, certainly drawing on best practices and a lot of data, but ultimately, as we move forward, creating a model that exists both at the level of policy, which, so I hope that part of this will be a policy-level discussion that's bouncing up against national and state-level conversations around universal pre-K for four- and three-year-olds. So part of it's a policy piece, and then part of it is the actual implementation and funding model and what it means to roll this out in Buncombe, and how we think about staging that over time. So thank you all for kind of providing the scaffolding for us to have the next set of conversations. Thank you certainly to Commissioners Presley and Whitesides for all your leadership in anchoring this and other committee members, and very much look forward to hearing other commissioners' ideas and thoughts, whether now or later, as we move forward with this, and continue to get updates around the planning process that will be underway. One quick flag, and you'll note this in the budget notes, is that one of the recommendations coming forward from the Early Child Education Committee was allocating a figure of $69,000 that could be used to support this planning process. We know it will be a heavy lift to go from the set of recommendations that we have as guide stars into an actual sort of blueprint for how we move forward with this. So that is one of the recommendations that will, that has come forward as part of the budget process this year. And Commissioners Whitesides or Presley, if, I don't know if there's anything else you all would want to add as we move forward.
All right. Rachel, and everyone who helped out with the presentation tonight and the updates and working on crafting plans for how we continue to elevate this work, we really appreciate it. Thank you so much. All right. Next up, I think Rachel's going to stay there and talk to us about the Strategic Partnership Grants Committee.
Again, I have the privilege of introducing committee members. Your next item is to hear from the Strategic Partnership Grants Committee, and this is their annual check-in and update with the Board of Commissioners on their work. And we have the executive committee of that group here with us today, Doug, Kate, and Kevin. I think Doug is up first.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Doug Clark, and I'm the chairman of the Strategic Partnership Initiative. On behalf of the committee, I want to thank you all for letting us speak here today. We really appreciate you all, and I especially appreciate that you've selected such a good, congenial committee, and we've been able to work together despite having some differences. But really, and along with your wonderful county staff, Rachel Nygaard and Angela Johnson have really made our lives very easy. But it is humbling to see all the need in Buncombe County and difficult to, to make hard decisions and choose who gets what, but we, we've managed to do it and have worked well as committee. I really appreciate the fact that I can be somewhat of a public servant, and my father, his, he was Jamie Clark, I think a lot of you all might remember him. He was a longtime public servant in Buncombe. He was a longtime public servant in Buncombe County. He was a very religious man, but he didn't really push his religion on anybody. But he really thought that being a good citizen was very important. And he always encouraged that in people. And this gives me an opportunity to do it. Anyway, just a little aside, when we were growing up, we had a friend, Mark, who used to come over to our house a lot and play, hang out. Later on, we went to different schools. When he became a teenager, he would also come visit us. At that time, he's sort of gotten into other things. He's had very long hair down past his waist. And he looked somewhat dissolute and had an absolute terrible complexion. Our dairyman, who was kind of a colorful fellow, he remarked that, oh, gosh, that he looked like he swallowed a million dollars and broke out in pennies. Anyway, another year or two went by. He came back out, hair all trimmed up, better car, good job. And my dad, he wouldn't really make a lot of comments at that time. But after he left, he said, oh, you know, old Mark's turned into a good citizen. So anyway, thank you all for letting me participate in this. And thank you for selecting such a good committee. At this point, I'm really going to turn this over to Kate Berger, who is the vice chairman of our committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
To get us started, the Strategic Partnership Grant Committee came about to make investment recommendations to the Board of Commissioners. And funding is granted to nonprofit organizations working toward outcomes in alignment with the board goals. As you can see here, we have all nine members of the committee, broken down by district, and the officers here, Doug, myself, and Kevin McAbey, our secretary. A bit of background on the committee. The commissioner vote came about in November of 2019 to form the committee. The members were appointed in January of 2020. We went through our first round of grants and kind of created the new process that we go by in April of 2020. And the beginning of the first funding year, the fiscal year 2021, came about July 1st of 2020. You can see here the grant cycle that we go through. We've just gone through our second time with the Grant Applications Committee review. And now we're at the Grant Awards stage. Fiscal year 2022 will begin July 1st. And we will continue along with county staff to monitor the grants. County staff provides great support. And we are always looking for process improvement. Some items of note for fiscal year 2021. We were able to engage in a grantee cohort call to discuss the COVID impact on projects. Certainly, when people were submitting their applications, we didn't realize what we were about to go through. So we had the opportunity to hear from the grantees how they had to kind of pivot in order to get their projects done or reallocate funds in order to keep things going. We participated in 30 grantee site visits in October and November. The site visits were fantastic. The committee members really enjoyed seeing the process in action and getting to talk one-on-one with people. A lot of the site visits were virtual. It had to be. Some were in person. And just a comment about county staff. They set up all of these and made them run like a well-oiled machine. If it was left to the committee members, it would have been a bit of a mess. But we leaned on them hard and they delivered. So in November, we had an opportunity to have great discussions about equity and grant-making. And we did some revisions to the application and scoring criteria with that in mind. We've now, in the first quarter, gone through reviewing and scoring the fiscal year 2022 applications, first individually and then together collectively. We finalized our funding recommendations in April. And just a note about grant eligibility. Nonprofits have to be in active operation for a minimum of two years to be eligible. The projects need to meet a public purpose and align with county strategic plan. Funding is limited to no more than three consecutive years for a single project. And funding is also limited to less than 30% of the organization's annual operating budget. I'd like to turn it over to Kevin McAbey, who's going to continue from here.
All right, thank you, Kate. So for this funding cycle, we were allocated a little over $889,000 to providing grants. But as you can see, there's a large need in the county. We received over $3 million in requests for projects this year. Those projects spanned all four of the county's strategic priorities. You can see the bulk of the projects requested were in the educated and capable community and the resident well-being priorities. However, the most dollars requested were in the vibrant economy priority. Now, that includes a $1 million capital request that our committee did not consider because it exceeded our entire budget. But even excluding that capital request, you can see that the requests were more than double of the budget that we were allocated. We were able to fund or to recommend for funding a number of really important projects. We recommend for funding 36 projects across the four different priorities. You can see that depending upon the priority in question, we funded between a third and a half of the dollars that were requested under that priority. We were able to fund a wide variety of projects, you know, getting at lots of different constituents in Buncombe County, lots of different issues, and lots of different priorities from the county's strategic plan. As Kate mentioned, the next steps, the staff will begin to establish funding contracts next month. And we, as a committee, will begin to exhale, after working through the past two to four months very diligently. But we get back together once the contracts have been funded, monitoring performance, monitoring impacts of these funds, and reviewing our process and trying to make the process better as we've done over the first two years of our committee's establishment. Part of that is really focusing on the positive things that have happened over the last couple of years. The committee really wanted to highlight some of the great work that is going on out there. I think the thing that the committee took away the most from these first two years of our establishment is just the strength, the passion, the dedication, the resilience of these nonprofits in Buncombe County. It's just been exceptionally eye-opening on really how dedicated these organizations and their staff are. The diversity of projects and constituencies that these organizations serve. Their ability to remain flexible and pivot to provide services to their constituents during the pandemic was just exhilarating to see as a committee that they found ways to serve their constituents no matter what barriers were put in place. The nonprofits have always been thorough and responsive to us for any questions, whether it be during the funding process, whether it be during visits, asking questions about how they're spending their money. So we really just want to, you know, support those nonprofits out there doing such amazing work. As Doug mentioned, our committee is really inclusive and collaborative. We've worked well together. And as many other organizations have done in the past year, we put a lot of effort into trying to increase equity in our grant-making process this year. And that felt really good to do as a collaborative effort as well. And then just to, you know, reemphasize what Kate said and what the Early Childhood Group said. We just couldn't do this without the staff. Rachel, Angela, Burnett, and others gave us the support we needed to be able to do this during the time we were given, to be able to meet online, to be able to review applications online, to have transparent, open meetings, you know, from our houses. It was really great this year. So with that, I will take any questions. I did not list the projects that we funded this year because of time. So I'll just open it up to any questions the commissioners have.
Commissioners, are there any questions?
Thank you all for the work that you put into this. I didn't always get to watch your meetings live, but I would go back and watch them. And the camaraderie that you all developed with each other is really impressive. And I think because of that, that's partially why you were able to make really tough funding decisions, that you developed that camaraderie and seemingly a trust that can be really difficult to do via online meetings. So I really commend you for that work. I also really want to commend you for reaching out back in the fall to talk about equity and reviewing these applications through that lens of equity. And you all took that incredibly seriously into heart. And it was exciting to hear those conversations as you all were making those decisions. So I really appreciate what you all have done and the time that you have spent to serve our nonprofits here in Buncombe County to ensure that they have funding resources available. I know those are not easy decisions to make. And finally, just to each of you all, what I want to say is we just heard about making decisions as commissioners. And I think what this commission, this committee, as well as early childhood, shows is how important public engagement is to the work that we do as commissioners. And really appreciate not only you all, our early childhood, and everybody across Buncombe County who is willing to volunteer and commit their time to serving on these committees and commissions and boards to help us do our jobs more effectively, efficiently, and transparently. So thank you all so much.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks, everyone, for your work on this important community advisory board. We appreciate it very much and taking it really seriously and taking a deep dive and such a thorough review process and all the time that folks have invested in this. Thank you very much. Okay. Next up, we will have the public hearing on the Recommended Budget and Economic Development. Public hearings for FY 2022. Jennifer Barnett will get us started. And let me also just reiterate for folks who may not have heard this at the beginning of the meeting, the commissioners' intent this evening is to hold a public hearing, to hear the reports from the staff, be able to listen to the community. We have a number of folks who have signed up to speak during the public hearing. We are not planning on voting on the budget tonight. Our intention is to vote on the budget at our next meeting in two weeks from tonight.
Thank you, chairman and commissioners. I would like to take a moment to thank the fire districts that are represented here this evening and in attendance with us, as well as our education partners. So thank you all for being here. So I want to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to review the recommended budget for fiscal year 2022. As you heard from the county manager at your last meeting, we have prepared a budget that advances your strategic plan and begins to address our infrastructure and staffing needs. But this budget allows us to transition from pandemic response to recovery. This evening, we are recommending one change to the recommended budget that was presented to you on May 18th. Previously, the county manager's recommended budget included a 3% increase for Asheville City Schools and Buncombe County Schools over their fiscal year 21 amount. Since that time, staff have worked with Buncombe County Schools to confirm the amount for their known expenditure increases. The increase needed to fund the known expenses is $2,465,944. This represents a 3.5% increase above fiscal year 21. This equates to $373,085 in the Buncombe County Schools' local current expense, which fully funds the proposed certified employee pay increase, which is the step only, and the non-certified employee pay increase, also a step only. The previous discussion in what seems to be most influx is around the percent pay increases, the 3% or the 5% for the state budget. These dollars would additionally fund the associated and proposed retirement and health insurance increases and the Board of Education compensation increase. The proportional share to be provided to Asheville City Schools is $67,810. Combined, the cost to fully fund these expenditures is $440,895 above the county manager's recommended budget from May 18th. The county manager is recommending adding this amount for budget adoption and offsetting the expenditure increase with a corresponding increase in appropriated fund balance. Any questions before I move forward? For fiscal year 2022, the recommended general fund budget totals $360,394,615. As you know, this is a revaluation year. The recommended tax rate is 48.8 cents, 2 cents above the revenue-neutral calculated rate of 46.8 cents. The five-year tax rate history is depicted here. We have been able to keep the tax rate relatively flat over the past four years and will continue to manage the budget to provide quality services at the lowest responsible tax rate. The general fund revenue budget is adopted by source. The fiscal year 2022 revenue budget totals $351.1 million with an appropriated fund balance of $9.3 million, which now includes the $440,000 for schools, for a total amount of $360.4 million in a balanced budget. Highlighting again our three largest revenue sources. Property tax revenue makes up 67% at an estimated $234 million. Intergovernmental revenue represents the second-largest at 12% and $43 million. And the third-largest revenue source is sales tax, which is 10% and $36 million proposed. To achieve a balanced budget, the fiscal year 2022 recommended budget includes the $9.3 million fund balance appropriation. The fiscal year 21 year-end projected fund balance minimum by policy is $50.1 million. With the fiscal year 2022 appropriation of $9.3 million, we will remain 3.5 percentage points above the 15% minimum by policy. The general fund expenditure budget is adopted by function. The fiscal year 2022 expenditure budget totals $360.4 million. Our three largest functions is education at 27% and a total of $96.9 million, human services at 25% and $88.4 million, and public safety at 20% at $73.1 million. For education, the recommended budget includes $7.3 million for AB Tech, which is a 2.8% increase over fiscal year 21, and this is their full request. A total of $85.3 million is recommended for the combined K through 12 schools. At an estimated average daily membership share, this provides $13.1 million in local current expense to Asheville City Schools and $72.7 million to Buncombe County Schools. This is the 3.5% increase for both school systems over fiscal year 21 and does not fully fund their requests. As I mentioned previously, this covers the known expenditure increases for Buncombe County Schools. And then the unknown increases depend on the state's budget. And we can come back and revisit those items and information when it's available, which is expected to occur likely after budget adoption. The recommended budget includes 27 new general fund positions totaling $1.48 million, one position in the solid waste enterprise fund at $63,000, and one position in the health and dental fund at an estimated $49,000. The capital review team made recommendations for capital projects to be financed with debt and pay-as-you-go funding for the upcoming fiscal year. The recommended budget includes $4.7 million for four debt-funded projects. And again, a reminder, the $1.2 million is proposed to be funded with excess proceeds from a previous debt-financed project. The recommended pay-as-you-go projects for capital and information technology total $4.18 million and are outlined here. Of note, we continue our vehicle replacement for emergency services and the sheriff's office. Of note, we continue our vehicle replacement for emergency services in the sheriff's office, and we will begin to deploy dashboard cameras in the new sheriff vehicles. The recommended budget also includes for us to plan for forward-facing departments at 35 Whitvin as outlined in the facility study. I'm reviewing some of the previously discussed community grant investments. The recommended budget includes several community grant investments totaling nearly $8.5 million. $3.75 million for early childhood education and development, $2.3 million for affordable housing support, $889,000 for strategic partnership grants, $500,000 for Isaac Coleman Community Investment Grants, $500,000 as the county's share and match for the Home and Community Care Block grant funding, $300,000 for a proposed homeowners assistance program. County staff are in the process of reviewing and drafting a proposed process, which we expect to bring back to you in June in advance of property tax bill notifications. $100,000 for tipping point grants and $100,000 for community recreation grants. A reminder, as is required for the budget cycle following the tax reappraisal year, the revenue neutral rate is calculated for county property tax rate, as well as each of the taxing districts under the county's scope of responsibility. Of the 20 fire districts, of the 20 fire tax districts, eight are recommended at revenue neutral, 12 are recommended above revenue neutral and ranges from .7 cent to 2.39 cent above revenue neutral. In addition, the Asheville City School supplemental tax rate is recommended at the revenue neutral tax rate of 10.62 cents. The total expenditure budget for all annual funds is depicted here. In addition to the changes to the general fund previously discussed, one other change has occurred in these budget figures since the county manager presented her recommended budget on May 18th. We have added the budget for the proposed capital project of the backup 911 center. So that $700,000 has been included in the 911 fund. And again, a reminder that the backup center in discussion is required by state statute. All documents associated with our fiscal year 2022 budget and the proposed fee schedule are available with today's agenda. The Budget Explorer is an online tool that allows the public to explore our budgets in more detail. And our next steps for today will be a request to conduct the public hearing on the recommended budget, and then if there are any specific items that the board wishes to address or make recommendations for changes to before our next scheduled time with you.
And Jennifer, in terms of what we need to accomplish this evening, we need to hold a public hearing on the budget, and we need to hold a separate public hearing on the economic development recommended funding levels.
You actually can do that. If I recall, I'll let Mike Fru actually speak to this.
It's designed as one public hearing. They changed the legislation a few years back that any of those economic development matters that need to be discussed can be combined with the budget ordinance. It is one action.
All right, so we'll just have a single public hearing on the budget, including the economic development component of the budget. Very good. Is there anything else we need to do before we open the public hearing?
No, what I will just note for the public and for you is that there are draft budget ordinances that will remain posted with the agenda today, and those are the ordinances that we would review with you at the time of the scheduled adoption. So those are included as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, are there any questions that anyone would like to ask before we open the public hearing? All right, then let's go ahead and do that now. So I'm going to open the public hearing at 6:23 PM, and I believe we have a number of folks who have signed up who wish to speak during the hearing. Is that right, Mr. Joyner?
That's correct. I think we have four individuals that have signed up for a public hearing.
Four individuals?
I think so, and I think they're in the room, so you can ask them to raise their hand. I don't have a list at this point in time.
That's fine. Yeah, could you raise your hand if you're interested in speaking? Great, all right, we'll start over on this side, and we'll kind of work our way in this direction. Okay, so you're our first speaker. Thank you for being here. Just share your name, where you live, and you have three minutes to speak, and the colors will change when you have 30 seconds left. And when your time is up, please stop speaking. We want to give everyone an equal amount of time to address the board.
Okay, thank you. My name's David Greenson. I live here in Asheville. I want to talk to y'all tonight about concerns I have about the property tax increase that is in this budget, $9.6 million property tax increase. I think some of you have seen the recent evidence of the inequities that are existing in our property tax appraisal system. This is something that's being found nationally. There is lots of evidence that black and Hispanic homeowners pay 10% to 13% more than people who have similar homes who are white nationwide. The folks who are at the bottom 10% tend to pay twice as much as the people at the top 10% when it comes to property taxes. And in Asheville, it's actually, so it's twice nationally, it's actually five times more here in Asheville, according to the Citizen Times. Folks in historically redlined and African-American South Side saw the biggest leap in their appraisals of 26%, whereas Biltmore Forests saw only a 4% increase. So we're seeing a lot of evidence of this here. And I know that the county has talked about doing some property tax assistance. There's a program in Durham where they're doing this. Their first year, they got a whole 15 people to be assisted, and in a second year, they got 30 people. So it really doesn't seem to go very far. I would say that we need to think about what we can do about this. And I appreciate that last year you all declared that racism was a public health crisis. One of the social determinants of health is economic stability. So when we knowingly are going to put people in a worse economic position, we know that's going to affect them. Likewise, I appreciate you all passing the reparations resolution last year. It touches me deeply. And the UN says that the first condition of reparations is the cessation of harm. You have to stop doing harm before you can really start repairing it. So I would encourage us, like, let's look for ways we can, to me, we could use some of the general fund instead of raising taxes, at least for this year. I know it's kicking the can down the road. I know this is the rainy day fund. You know, quite frankly, it's not going to rain much on me if you raise these property taxes, but it's going to rain on the folks on the South Side. And so that's why you have a rainy day fund, to try to safeguard people in unusual circumstances. Buy ourselves a year, we'll figure out how to fix our appraisal system, and then we can raise taxes next year. And if you're going to do a program of assistance, let's figure out how we can reach a lot more than 15 or 30 people. And part of that could just be publicity. I would say, let's put the application for, you know, for being part of the program in the same envelope as the bill. You know, I mean, everybody opens that envelope. So if it's right there, we'll get a lot more people to participate in that program. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, who would like to go next? Sure, come on up. Yes, yeah, you can go next.
Hi, thank you. I'm Vicki Meath from West Asheville. In Buncombe County, the cost of living has continued to rise, causing many working-class people to have to move further away from jobs and amenities. The importance of transportation and the need for the public investment in transit is growing. While the county operates mountain mobility and the Trailblazer routes, the city of Asheville operates the Asheville Bus System and bears the lion's share of the cost. As Director of Just Economics and a member of the Asheville Regional Transit Coalition, I encourage you to consider your role in supporting transportation options in Buncombe County. I would hope that in the short term, county funding for the arts system would grow, but it looks to me that the opposite is about to happen. While I applaud the county's commitment to continue contribution to the Leicester Extension, I also want to point out that every bit of the transit system is in the county, because the city is in the county, and every city resident is also a county resident. The modest request from the Asheville Regional Transit Coalition was to restore the subsidy for paratransit service. ADA paratransit service is required in order for the city to legally operate the Asheville Bus System, and the county used to charge the city less than the cost of this service, effectively subsidizing a service used by county residents. The memo on the consent agenda on May 18th suggests that the county is planning to no longer subsidize the per-mile cost of paratransit service. I hope the county will reconsider support for the existing art system in the short term, and in the long term, take a more holistic approach to providing transit services in the county. Consider the collaboration in how the county meets this growing need for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Keely Knapp, and I'm a member of the Buncombe County Library Board, and I'd like to thank the Commissioners for the continued support of the library. Since 2002, library card users have increased by 57%, while staff has decreased by 23%. Staff work alone a minimum of 51 hours a week, leading to inequities in customer service and access to resources, as well as raising safety concerns. During the COVID-19 pandemic, library staff quickly pivoted to add new virtual services, many of which will be continued during, after the pandemic subsides. This includes doorside material pickup, Zoom exercise classes, Radiorama Drive-In Storytime, and the Laptop and Hotspot Learning Program. In addition, the library has a multi-year plan to implement initiatives developed with performance management, which support the county's strategic plan with a focus on equity. These new services continue to place a strain on an unsustainable path in terms of staffing. This is why the library board is asking for an increase in the staffing line budget to help meet the community needs and expectations. Engaging and educational programming is a core public service, library service for people of all ages, baby, toddler, preschool storytimes, adult book clubs, technology training, group exercise, summer learning, author visits, and more. Currently, the library's budget only supports these programs in a limited capacity, as there's no line in the budget for programming. The majority of the programming is funded by the Friends of the Library, and in 2019, they provided $57,000 for programming, which is an average of just under a dollar per attendees. Unfortunately, the Friends do not have equal fundraising amongst the groups, and this leads to an inequity amongst the different branches in the programming that they are able to provide. This is why the library board is requesting dedicated funding for programming from the county, so that the essential core service of programming can be provided equally between the branches. Once again, thank you for listening, and the library board appreciates your support.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks for serving on the board. All right, did we have someone else? Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
I think that's it.
All right, I appreciate everyone taking time to come out and speak to us about the proposed budget. Again, we're not going to vote on it tonight, but we'll have a chance to reflect on the comments that a lot of folks will also send in emails commenting on different aspects of the budget as well, and our plan is to adopt the budget at our next meeting. Commissioners, are there any questions or comments? Now, we're not going to vote, but happy to have a chance to ask any questions. Oh, let's close the public hearing. Is that what you were saying, Avril? Yeah, all right, let's close the public hearing at 6:32 PM. Any questions or comments?
County Manager Pinder, I may be getting ahead of things. Were you planning to talk at some point about the tax assistance program that we've been discussing?
We will bring it back next week. Jennifer mentioned that we have the $300,000 aside for that. We can answer any questions, but we are working through that, and it will be on your agenda next week, two weeks, June 15th, for more details around that.
Great, so maybe if we could just pause there for one second to connect some of the dots, and of course, it'll come up again. You know, I think this, I'm thinking of a conversation we had at one of our budget workshops about this intersection, intersecting set of issues around how we're thinking about equity and particularly the tax burdens for folks in neighborhoods that are seeing more rapidly escalating valuations, and the fact that an increase of, you know, 100 bucks on your tax bill can actually be a big deal for folks in our community. We certainly know that and want to be thinking from a policy perspective about making sure there aren't disproportionate burdens on any part of our community. And one tool that's been used in other communities, as was mentioned during public comment, is an assistance program, basically, that's based on income eligibility that helps to offset some of that burden. So that is, I think, what's being referred to here, and I certainly look forward to hearing more conversation about that. And also, generally speaking, you know, would really like to kind of re-up this question about how we can make sure there's the maximum possible utilization of such a program if we were to get it up and running, but also of pre-existing programs, whether it's the appeals option that exists, or the programs both for veterans and elderly folks on limited incomes that can provide other kinds of relief. We have really limited tools as a local government when we think about the tax rate. It needs to be uniform across the county, but we do have these programs that we can offer, and if they're not being, and just thinking in the most robust ways that we can about equity of criteria or eligibility, I should say, but also, we know that equity is also about access and how we build bridges into these programs. And I'd love to just kind of make sure that as we move forward, that those questions are front and center for us. I've certainly been hearing from a lot of folks in the community who, you know, just are experiencing stress and anxiety around the anticipated bills that they're looking at for city residents. There's, you know, a city tax hike they could be seeing, plus a county one, and just want to make sure that we are having these conversations in a really open way and making sure we're assessing every tool available to us as we think about this. So thank you to staff for preparing for that, but just wanted to spend a little bit more time on that tonight, rather than kind of rushing past it.
So we'll have a more detailed presentation at our next meeting. We're also anticipating voting on the budget, of course. There is $300,000 programmed into the budget currently for this sort of tax relief purpose, and we'll get more details on the thinking around how that would be administered, exactly how the policy would work at our next meeting.
Right.
Great. We're looking forward to that. Let me ask just, and if there's not an answer to this now, but just one of the questions I've been thinking about in regards to this policy, which I'm really glad we're doing. This is, Durham is doing something, but there's not been a lot of places that have sort of tried to figure out a way to provide some property tax relief for lower-income homeowners. So this, I'm glad we're, I'm glad we're looking at this. You know, there are some existing state policies that provide some property tax relief through the homestead exemptions, right, which mostly benefit elderly, low-income homeowners, as well as disabled homeowners, and I believe there might be some for veterans as well. So there are very specific groups that are eligible, which is great for those groups, but it's not for anyone who doesn't meet the specific criteria. Do the staff currently have an opinion about whether if we create this new local program, whether it would be available to folks who currently are qualifying for homestead exemptions, or if the idea is to kind of help the folks who don't qualify for the existing tax relief benefits to kind of fill in that pretty big gap that exists for folks who, you know, most folks don't qualify for that? So what's the current thinking around that?
The current thinking would be the gap. So if you already qualify for a state program, you will go to that bucket, and if you don't, this is the gap piece that we're looking at. So it would just be, it would not be based on age, it would be based on income levels.
Okay, thank you. I didn't necessarily have an opinion about that, but that was just one of the questions I was wondering how that might come forward. Commissioners, are there other questions about this particular item at this time? Okay. And without going into all the details about it, I mean, with the awareness we have around like what Durham has done, the $300,000 that's budgeted, I mean, we do have some optimism that we will be able to deploy that to a much larger kind of universe of residents who would qualify than what we've seen in like the Durham program, right?
Right, and to David's point, we are going to have this as part of the bill. So when you get your bill, there'll be a conversation in there that you can read. We're actually holding bills until you guys get to see this program before we roll our bills out. But yeah, so our bills will be a little bit late this year because of the timeline to get this done.
But the one other comment I would make, I really appreciate the folks in the community who have kind of elevated the issue around, you know, is the appraisal process itself as, you know, it's obviously based on, you know, the whole idea is to do appraisals of properties, right? Property values change over time, you do new appraisals to get more accurate, updated information, but there are concerns that, you know, around the country, the, for whatever reasons, you know, there are you know, there tends to be an overvaluation of some of the more modest homes in communities, and perhaps an undervaluation of some of the more high-end properties. So I just want to say that I think the commission really takes those questions really seriously, and we have been seeking to kind of dig into them more, working with our tax office and looking at that. It seems like there's been a lot more attention to this just in the very recent past. Over the last several months, there's been some more national coverage of the issue and more local discussion about it, so I'm glad it's coming forward. But we're not going to be able to, you know, resolve all these issues in this, you know, budget year that we're in right now. You know, a lot of these questions kind of surfaced after our appraisal, reappraisal process was essentially already complete. So we're, I just want to let folks know, we're really looking at this, because we want to make sure we get that, we really get that right. Like, this is an important process, and so, and the staff have been great to kind of work with us to start looking at those questions. So it's going to be a process I think we're going to need to stay engaged in, you know, for going forward over the next couple of years. It's not, we're not going to be able to do it all as part of what happens in this reappraisal, but I want folks to know that we are very interested in doing all we can to get that right. Any other questions, commissioners, on the budget?
I want to confirm that I am reading the budget correctly, that $55,000 was budgeted for library programming this year. Am I reading that correctly? It looks like FY '19, '20, and '21 amended, well, FY '20 actual was $61, but it looks like...
Off the top of my head, there is some budget made available for the library.
Okay.
And I can look to one of our staff to get that information.
That'd be great. I'm looking at the interactive tool online, and I see $55,000. I just wanted to confirm that that was for library programming.
I would like to believe if it's in the Budget Explorer, Commissioner Edwards, then that would be...
I want to make sure it was there, to let everyone know, it's there.
Yes, that's correct. There is $55,000 in, and library programming is the spend category there within the recommended budget.
Thank you, Rusty. I appreciate it.
All right, I had just one other comment. It's a pretty small one, but I just, you know, I know we've all had a lot of questions. We've been emailing staff for more details on things. One of the questions I asked about was the, on the Sustainability Office budget, and I appreciate the staff following up and providing that. I think it looks, I think it looks pretty good for the, you know, at our retreat and planning sessions, we've talked about, you know, the RFP we did last year was such a great success, and that's, you know, going into an implementation phase. Financially, it looks very attractive for taxpayers, plus a lot of great clean energy. If, reviewing the information, I believe that the staff requested funds to be able to do like two additional, like solar farm-type projects, similar to what we're doing on the county's retired landfill. So being able to do two more projects like that, I mean, I just looked at the information recently. My sense is that there might need to be a little bit of additional funding to actually be able to do the two projects. So I agree with the goal, but I would maybe ask the staff to, I don't know, maybe think about whether the amount there is actually adequate to get the, like, two projects started. So that was my only other comment at this time. So if there's... There's not a specific, these are, these are sort of, there's not a specific site identified yet for where they would be. It's very, it's beyond, it's a pre-early stage. It's just funds to be able to do it if sites are identified. All right, well, commissioners and staff, thank you all for your presentations. We don't, we're not voting on this, so I think we're, if there's no other comments, then we're going to move on to our next item. Which is under, under County Manager's report.
I do have one item I want to get, give the board an update on. So as you know, we've been talking about the Local Recovery Act, and we are preparing to release that request for proposal for the coronavirus state funds, the 50 million. We will be seeking projects to help the community recover from and respond to COVID-19 and its negative economic impact. We plan to release that RFP by the end of this week. It will be due back June 15th, July 15th, so it will be out there for six weeks for residents and nonprofits and quasi-governmental agencies to respond. Our first year spending for those funds by the U.S. Treasury will be August 31st. So initial awards will be announced no later than August 31st by the commission. So once we get those RFP backs, we'll be bringing those to you as we then decide who to fund. So you will be putting that on the street in June, due back in July, so you will get some feedback in August.
So in... In the, obviously, different community groups can submit proposals for different project ideas. And is it correct that different county departments will also bring forward sort of internal proposals for different projects that they think might be worth considering?
Correct, so we will have an external process and internal process. They pretty much marry each other, but staff would compete against each other of those projects.
Okay. Are there any, you know, we had a commission discussion about this on kind of the, you know, very beginning of the process, to share some high-level input. Are there going to be other opportunities for sort of discussion about this until we get to the, you know, do the RFP process at the end?
We can schedule another work session to talk through that with the board. Our plan was to get that input from the community and then have a work session with you as we go through those. So our goal would be, once we get the proposals in, then we can categorize them and group them, and said, we have so much in housing, or so much in homeless, and then we will bring those to the board, and we can decide on our funding limits and what we want to actually award at that time.
And when did you say you would want to bring that back to the board?
After we get those RFPs in, so we would kind of see what's out there and what we have from the community.
And I'm sorry, I know you said it, but when would that be?
July 15th is...
July 15th is the deadline, so later in July, we can have some more commission discussion, because we'll know what the ideas are that have come forward internally and externally. And then, but we have to make a decision by the end of August.
That will be the plan, so we can start funding projects.
So we'll have over a month to kind of think about the different choices and options and priorities and make a decision. Okay, that sounds, that sounds good. Although also a very tight timeline for that amount of funding, I'm sure.
One of the ideas that staff has been talking about is a rolling funding plan. So we could say, here's what we want to start now, we can keep working through the rest of it. But our goal would be try to start, especially if there's some that are show-ready, to start those right away, so they're not waiting. We still have until 2024 to obligate that funds. You have to do final reporting and final spending by 2026. But our goal will be, can we utilize as much time as possible? So we have been talking about a rolling award process.
Very good. Anything else under the manager's report?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. We don't have any old business. Under New Business, the first item is a resolution approving the memorandum of agreement between the state of North Carolina and local governments on proceeds relating to the settlement of the opioid litigation. And Michael Frue, senior staff attorney, will explain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. I'm here today to recommend to you that you approve this memorandum of agreement, which has been negotiated between NCACC groups, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, 555 Committee, of which our own Jasmine Beach Farrar as commissioner was a member. So there's five members of the county commissioners, five county managers, and five county attorneys helped negotiate this with the State Attorney General's Office and the Department of Justice. So Max, if you can kick me to number nine. So what I'd like to do first is just to lay a little groundwork as to how we got here. On a national level, there's thousands of local and state governments involved in lawsuits against the opioid manufacturers, all intended to hold those pharmaceutical supply chain participants accountable for the damage caused by the opioid endemic. At this time, there's information that there is a global settlement in the works, and that would be all these lawsuits against the named defendants, Johnson &amp; Johnson, AmerisourceBergen, Cardinal Health, McKeeson, as well as the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy fund. So it's anticipated that in the very near future, $26 billion would become available for this settlement. And it's in anticipation of that announcement and settlement that the work was done with the Association of County Commissioners, Department of Justice, to be able to facilitate compliance by the state and local governments with that national settlement. So at this point, I'd like to kick off to Commissioner Beach Farrar to have any input, comments she might have regarding that process and her role in that agreement.
Yeah, just briefly, we've talked about this a few times, but just to reinforce, first of all, just the level of appreciation for everyone in Buncombe County who's so much on the front lines of responding to this issue. And also that, you know, I think the way this settlement MOA is structured really positions us to be able to move funding quickly to some strategies that we know are working really well to help people get the treatment that they need. And within the language of the MOA, you see that there's a set of high-impact strategies that have been enumerated, that funding from the settlement can be used for. And Buncombe County, I think, we have almost every one of those already in action here. So the good news in this situation, I think, is that once the settlement is reached and the funds start moving, they'll be able to go to work that is already underway and helping people get the treatment they need and begin rebuilding their lives and their families. So that, none of that would be possible if it weren't for people working very hard every single day on this issue for many, many years. And I'm excited to see Buncombe County, hopefully this will pass tonight, poised to be one of the counties helping move forward with this being a statewide effort. For this MOA to work, it has to be truly statewide. We certainly know that the opioid crisis doesn't respect county lines any more than it does any of the other lines that may divide people. And this is a moment where we need every community that could sign the MOA to do so. So I'm hopeful we will do that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So the general idea would be that 80% would go to local governments listed in the MOA. So what currently is labeled, and Buncombe County in late 2017 was one of the first counties in the state to file an action in this matter in federal district court. Seventy-six, 75 other, for a total of 76 counties joined or followed suit, and eight municipalities also joined. What this memorandum of agreement does is allocate for all 100 counties, plus 17 municipalities, that being the municipalities that are 75,000 population and greater. 15% would go to the state of North Carolina, and 5% would be used as a county incentive fund. That's a, that pot of money for Buncombe County would put a little bit extra into our percentage. The Buncombe County percentage is roughly 2.5%. I'm not going to pretend to describe how they came up with this formula, but after the decimal, there's 15 other digits that follow, so it's a pretty precise number. City of Asheville share, and they're the only other municipality in Buncombe County that would comply, that would be eligible, since they have, I think there's maybe 90,000 people in the city now, and their percentage is .23 of a percent. So that 5%, because Buncombe County would meet that threshold for incentive, we'd get a little bit more money. So if you could go to the next slide, and then one more. So the 18, the $850 million allocated to North Carolina would be distributed over a period of 18 years. It's designed to be front-loaded, such that most of the money comes and gets to be used first. As Commissioner Beach Farrar mentioned, I mean, there's a number of evidence-based and evidence-informed strategies that are approved and listed in this agreement. And if you could go back one, forward one, I'm looking for, so, yes. So Option A for local government, there's various basic-level strategies that would work, that are eligible. And to get to Option B, which is, I believe, where Commissioner Beach Farrar is aiming, is that Buncombe County's already done a lot of work in this arena, and with further collaboration with local stakeholders and municipalities, it opens the door for more services, more opportunities to assist with this, with fighting this epidemic. So of that money that goes to, would be allocated for Buncombe County, that's a little over $20 million over that many years, and in fact, all the $850 million in the state. This memorandum of agreement is designed such that 100% of that money distributed at the local level would go to fight this epidemic. Now, that's possible because of, in this multi-district litigation, the Judge Polster, it's a sealed order, so we don't have all the facts, all the specifics, but there's $2 billion allocated for attorney's fees. So there's not going to be any further money coming off the top. And to make this work, in order for there to be a global settlement, a national settlement, the national attorneys would have to agree to waive contingency fees on the state and local basis for whom they represent. If that doesn't happen, then there won't likely be a national settlement. If, the numbers would change, and we'd go into a default mechanism, which comes from the national, the draft of the national settlement. This memorandum of agreement also has a number of transparency elements involved. It's going to require a dashboard, going to require a yearly audit and reporting to the local government commission. And again, national, if national council rejects that common fund for settlement, then this agreement would be void, and we just put a lockstep in there to try to keep the pressure on, that if they withdraw, or if they don't announce to the court by August 1st of this year that they intend to participate in that fund, then this agreement would be void, and that's what most of the other counties and county's attorneys are doing across the state. I'll just point out two things. The City of Asheville is scheduled to approve this memorandum of understanding, or agreement, a week from today, and 19 other counties in the state have so far agreed to this MOA and have approved it. I'll be happy to try to answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you, Mike.
How much money are we talking about?
For Buncombe County, a little over 20, I think, $21 million. I mean, that's 850 times that .25, et cetera.
And it would be over 18 years?
Yes, sir.
So front-end, how much would be on the front-end?
We don't have those details. Many of the national settlement details are still in confidence with the court.
Okay, any other questions, commissioners? Or motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we pass the resolution to sign onto the MOA. Second.
That was really close. But I'm sure Lamar could tell who was first, so. Okay, Terry. Further discussion? I just want to say thanks to all the people who've worked on this. Obviously, we're, Buncombe County is just one part of a much bigger movement across the country to try to hold the people accountable who helped create this horrible catastrophe our country's experienced around the opioid epidemics. But I really appreciate Buncombe County being willing to get involved in this early. I think it helped influence the process in other communities that are wrestling with this. So anyway, I really appreciate all the county staff and the people who served on the county commission previously, who supported that decision to do that as well. And it's encouraging that we are potentially about to see a lot of the benefits of that. Thanks, everyone. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and the last item under New Business is a budget amendment for local fiscal recovery funds. Budget amendment and a budget amendment for emergency rental assistance, round two. And Jennifer Barnett will...
Yes. Thank you. So I'll begin with the local fiscal recovery funds. I think that was first on the agenda. So you've heard from both Strategic Partnerships and the county manager, and several times previous. We have received the first tranche in the amount of $25,366,645 of the local fiscal recovery funds. We are proposing to go ahead and budget the full award of $50,733,290. The second tranche is expected to be distributed to the county within 12 months. What this enables you to do is that if the funding plan is decided by August the 31st and incorporates the full $50 million, dependent upon the template that comes from the Department of, I do believe, Treasury, then you would be able to work to at least encumber or obligate projects for that future period. So in conjunction with the finance director, we don't foresee any challenges related to that. So this would be established in our Grants Project Fund, and are requesting to appropriate the revenues and the expenditures in the amount of $50,733,290.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a motion to approve the budget amendment?
A small one.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I think that was the biggest budget amendment I've ever voted on. Okay. And next is a budget amendment for emergency rental assistance round two.
Yes. So this is a request additionally for our grants project fund. We are in receipt of the first 40% of the proposed $6,233,395 award. In keeping with the same, we would like to propose to budget the full award. We would be due to receive, I was trying to remember. I don't know that we know that, maybe March of 2022 is the anticipated second, the later 60%. It is allowable to use up to 15% of this grant for administrative costs. We do anticipate using some to continue the staff that have continued to support some of the other CRF and the ERA round one. So we're requesting to budget the full award, and will work to use a minimal portion for the administration, and would use the rest for the remainder eligible direct assistance.
Is there a motion to approve the budget amendment?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
All right. We come to board appointments. These are mostly reappointments. First up, we have the Early Childhood Education and Development Fund Committee, and there's six members serving who have applied to be reappointed. I would make the motion to reappoint those six members. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And next up is the Strategic Partnership Grants Committee.
Make a motion to reappoint Rebecca Streimer and Carpenter and Kimberly Robinson. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And next up is the Economic Development Coalition, and there's four members who are currently serving, who are seeking, actually, there's three people who are seeking reappointment in addition to one person who is seeking a new appointment.
I'll make a motion to, to appoint Lindsey Roden, Jim Oliver, William Hathaway, and Jay Richardson to the Economic Development Coalition.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And last is the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee.
I move to approve Kay Galvin to the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Joyner, is there anything else we need to talk about?
Chairman, I'd like to bring something up here on the early childcare that we just spoke earlier. You have to attend 75% of the meetings to stay home, and just want to make it that we may have one that may not be able, and let Lamar know in the future we might need to put that out.
Okay. If that's the case, then yeah, this, we can follow up on that, make sure that we're following through with the policy, or if someone's had some issues, to talk to them about it, see if it can be rectified, or if it's not possible, then to make a change. Great.
That, that's a good segue, because we need to do some interviews for the Early Childhood Education and Development Fund Committee. We have, I think we have two vacancies, and we have five applicants. One vacancy is for a parent, another vacancy is for a community member at large, and wanted to see if the board was interested in doing interviews before our next meeting, which is June 15th.
Is it possible to just get a little information about the demographics of applicants, make sure that there's a diverse applicant pool?
I, I can send that to the board. I'll do, do that tomorrow, if that's okay.
Would it be okay if we kind of just, or, I don't know how we...
If, if, if you want to go ahead, if you want to go ahead and plan the time, just in case, so it's in a public setting, we can do that, and if you're okay, once I give the demographics, you can give us to go ahead to schedule those interviews, or we can hold off, so it's up to the board, but that may be a concession that we can...
But your question is whether we could do this in, at our next meeting, the first meeting?
Well, obviously, yes, special meeting to do the interview, like we typically do, if that's...
Do a special meeting?
Yes.
To do it earlier in the day on the 15th? Yeah, because we don't, we don't have affordable housing that day, so, you don't have early childhood that day, so doing something that same day might, might work on this particular, so maybe at noon? Noon or 1? If we don't have a large number, then a little bit later might be better.
It's, it's 5?
5, 5 to interview, okay.
It is 2 for the parent position and 3 for the at-large position.
Are you, are you available, Amanda? You have a 2 o'clock? Okay, well, if we do 1 o'clock, I think we can get them done in an hour, and then you could, does that give you time to get to where you need to be? Okay, let's plan on starting at 1 o'clock, and we'll try to start promptly at 1 o'clock, make sure we, on the 15th.
And I, and I will get the demographics to you tomorrow, so you can see who has applied for those positions.
Okay. Sounds like a plan. Anything else on this, Lamar?
I, I will also like to say that for all interested parties, we do have quite a number of vacancies on our website, if the community is interested in serving, so just reiterate to y'all as well, to drum that to your constituents and see if they are interested.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, we have a couple of announcements. On June 15th at 3:00 PM, the county commissioners will hold their briefing meeting at 200 College Street, room 326 in downtown Asheville. As just mentioned, on June 15th at 1:00 PM, we will hold interviews with some candidates for boards and commissions, and on June 15th at 5:00 PM, the commissioners will hold a regular meeting at 200 College Street, room 326 in downtown Asheville. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Do we make a formal decision about our July meeting schedule?
Thank you. Staff is recommending that we move that meeting to July 13th, which is that second Tuesday.
It's one meeting.
Does anybody have a conflict with that date? I, I'm good. Okay, so we're going to schedule our one July, we're not going to meet on the week of the July 4th, we'll meet the following week.
Correct.
It's a scheduled meeting. Of course, we can always schedule another meeting if we have to have one, but that'll be the plan, is to have that meeting for July.
Correct.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn, or did we already do that? Okay, you said, okay, got it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.